Good evening, everyone. It is five thirty. On March the seventh, this is Robert Stevenson. I'm going to call the order, the South of County Grandville Regional School District School Committee regular meeting for tonight. Can I get a motion to enter in the meeting?
So.
I'm gonna show a hands to enter in. Aaron, let the record show the motion passes seven zero zero. I'm gonna get everybody to stand for the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which expands, nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as far.
Right, so. In your package, we have the minutes from our meeting from the fourteenth, and I get a motion to enter the minutes.
So.
Any questions on the minutes? I get a show of hands to that the minutes.
I'll stay.
Okay, Erin was a record show, the most passes six zero one with Ryan of singing. All right, warrants, we've got warrants going around. If you guys can take care of load, that'd be fantastic. Correspondent Superintendent Willard, do you have anything down?
I do not.
Okay. Public comment, do we have anybody here? And everybody is part of the school, so it's like we're gonna go through public comment. Okay. That's part of the night. What do you got for us tonight, guys?
We're done in front of the crowd. Wish I had something a little more exciting, but um. Students are back from Henry break and we're hoping it warms up and we also would appreciate if the high schools would be allowed to go sit.
During the day?
And then they got a hot chocolate.
Well, you know, new opportunities, you're never open, maybe in positions, you never know.
Kids wanna go sledding, I say.
Is it affordable?
Yeah, um, winter sports have wrapped its proceedings in the past few weeks. Girls and boys basketball both played their last away games in state tournament. Um, the indoor track team sent four athletes to the statewide pentathlon in Boston. And each athlete competes in long jump, high jump hurdles, the one thousand chocolate, and then their scores are combined for overall score. Um, spring sports are beginning soon. NHS is hosting another volleyball tournament tomorrow, so for those of you in high school, they should be in the team. And um. This week, Mr. Trammell sent out a schedule of events to parents regarding the upcoming case for seniors who only have about fifty days to learn. And finally, the drama club had started preparations for the spring musical Shrek, which will have shows Thursday, the twenty third in March to Saturday.
We're reaching the grind time at this point. We got like two weeks and then we have like our tech week is, which is when we're at the school till like ten o'clock at night. Yeah. So we're getting around that time.
Food coming in.
Oh, yes, food. That's the best stuff. Frankly, that's the only reason why I did.
So are we gonna be expecting countdown clocks when you come live for the next bunch of meetings, like X amount of days left?
He's already driving me with donuts. She doesn't know why she just gave me donuts. Say, what's the story? She's like, I'll let you know.
Oh, there's a three, two seniors gift days. All right.
They did that last year.
Yeah, I know. They had half the class, you know, I know it was a little. Yeah, you know, it goes crazy sometimes. Okay. Are you guys all set? Yes. Okay, fantastic. Thank you very much. You'd be great in front of the crowd. All right, educational presentation. Superintendent Willard, I guess I'm gonna let you start off with this.
Okay, then I'm gonna pass it on to you. But yeah, so I'd just like to introduce everybody tonight. Um, as you know, there've been some changes at central office. This has been like a very busy year here at central office. Um, we do had, we do have an opening for a director of finance and operations. Um, and we, well, you as the school committee will be taking a vote today to appoint Principal Joseph Trammell um, as the interim director of finance and operations. Uh, I have worked with Joe for seven years now. Um, I can tell you that Joe is the kind of person that I like to work with because he doesn't agree with me all the time. He pushes back on me. He challenges me. He makes me look at things in different ways. Um, he lets me know when my meetings are running too long and um, but he always has my back. And he's always willing to learn and try new things. Um, over the past few weeks, um, I have asked Joe to step up while running the school to handle some of the um, operations functions of the job. Um, he has done so. He has reached out to people in the community. Um, he's already starting to make connections in um, the business field, um, as you say, because we're the singletons. And so um, I'm really excited um, that he's willing to uh, step into this role. And I know he's ready for it. And um, I know that he only has the best interest of our school district because um, you've been here nine years as the principal of the regional school and I, and I, and I know his heart is where my heart is and it's um, in wanting what's best for our school district. So. So thank you for that.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I appreciate the, the confidence that Superintendent Willard has had me over the last nine years. Not only at the regional school, but in, in uh, giving me the responsibility in this opening. And so uh, if I was granted that opportunity to step into this role for the next few months, then I would um absolutely give it my best and, and support uh, the students and the people in the towns um, to the best of my abilities.
Super, that's it. So I guess.
Is this interim position and when, if we haven't yet posted, when are we posting and when are we looking to hire a permanent replacement? So we are not posting the position. If we did decide to post, we would probably post um, towards the end, middle of May, end of May. Um, I don't anticipating having to post. Um, I anticipate Joe being able to do the job and doing the job well. Um, as I said, he does have a lot of connections already in um, he was already on the phone today with East Line Meadow. Um. I don't even know all the people that we talked to today, but he, he has a connection to people that he can already reach out to and talk with. And um, like I previously will get him a coach. Um, and we would do a formal appointment on July, as of July first. So this interim position goes for the remainder of the school year.
The school year and then a formal appointment.
Yes. So what we'll, so we'll have as an opportunity in front of us tonight, what we're looking to do is to appoint Joe as the interim in this interim position for the remainder of the year. We will then revisit this at the end of the year and determine as a committee whether we want to appoint Mr. Trammell into this position going forward, which would obviously exclude us from having to put it up to post. Um, if for some reason we do not want to have him continue in the position, then we would open up a vision for posting.
Okay. And who in the meantime, for the remainder of the school year will be filling Mr. Trammell's shoes at the regional school?
It's a great question. So at two fifteen today, I had a staff meeting um, up at the regional school and we appointed, um, if things go according to plan tonight, Ms. Rena Shorter will be the interim principal up at Suffolk Regional School for the remainder of the year. Which I think is kind of neat because she stepped into the woodland job um, without ever the thought of taking over as a principal. And I was, I was laughing with the staff today. I go, she kept begging me to come back to the regional school. I said, you better be careful what you ask for. Because now she's back and now she's the acting principal there. So um, it was a great opportunity, I think, to really, as I was saying to Chairman Stevenson and um, Mr. Locke before, you don't know what it feels like to actually sit in the seat of a building principal until you're actually in it. You can think you understand it. You can think you understand the stress, but until you're actually there, you don't know. Um, and so I, I, I think it was a great opportunity for her to um, get her feet wet at Woodland School. So she actually knows what it feels like to sit in that seat. And um, the fact that she's willing to um, take on that challenge, I appreciate. I think she'll do a great job.
I think, you know, you have a great staff here. I think that you all represent the uh, school district well. Good and well, um, I'm hoping the shorter fills your shoes in the commencement speech. I look forward to that every year. You know, but I, you know, I, I sit and listen to Joe.
You give a good one every year.
Yeah, yeah. You're staying.
There we go.
Play drugs a little bit. No, no, honestly, congrats. You know, I, I welcome the change and I, again, I think this is a a, a, a great school district and I'm proud to call it one of mine, so.
So I think just from a technical perspective, well, Jen would be, we wouldn't obviously have anything to do with the principal, but I think it's the same setup where, where Miss Shorter is gonna be the interim principal of the high school. Everything goes well. Jen has then has the ability to obtain that position. So we would not necessarily need to do a search for a principal. We would, if everything goes according to plan, we would need to open up a vice principal position at the end of the year. So. All right. So what are you handing off to me?
No.
Or that was, okay, all right, I'm like, I don't want to do anything. From my, from my end, I guess, over the last couple of weeks, I've been working very closely with Superintendent Willard, Mr. Trammell, and Ted and I sort of about the budget. I have to commend both of them for the effort and the work, the extra work that they've done to get us where we are. They jumped right into it. They didn't give it a second thought. They were in here on the weekends. They were trying to figure out where we were. Um. I am very confident that from a budget perspective, we're gonna be in good shape, you know, where our numbers are, we know where the finances are. Um, it's going to be a, a challenge and a difficult year. We've got some, we'll go over here in a second, but we've got some costs that are really out of our control that are driving the excess in the budget this year. The fault of interim, no, it's just, that's where the numbers are. So I don't think we're gonna run into hopefully major issues on having discussions with the town. I've already had preliminary conversations with some of the selectmen in Southwick, so they're aware of this. We've got a meeting coming up on the twenty fifth, and we're gonna be able to explain that to them in much more detail. Um, obviously, as we get closer to budget season and the town meetings and going to every one of those, I'm gonna make sure that I'll beat all three of them this year. Um, so Joe and Jen and I will be at all of them, so hopefully we'll be able to answer everybody's questions. Um, but from my perspective, I think Mr. Trammell would be a perfect person to be in this position. He certainly put forth the effort at this point to show that he's very dedicated to do this without even being a spot. So. From that end, you wanna go, you wanna jump into your exciting part of the meeting?
Okay, so. Because I was a teacher, I like to tell the budget, not through just numbers, but like through a story. Um, so this year's story was kind of like a Grimm's fairy tale. Um. It kind of is what it is. Take ten copies. I have more of them here for myself. So this is kind of like a mini draft of um, what the, I'm going to do for the big public presentation. Um, the beautiful thing about being here um, was that I was really able to work. Was really, I was able to just kind of see where everything is in the budget, how the budget works, what makes up the budget. Um, I always knew we had grants. Um, I didn't really understand how the grants worked, what went into the grants. I just um. Knew we've put some people in there and everything. I knew we had the Easter money and I knew we had a plan for Easter. So I'm gonna um, start off with um, yesterday, and I'm gonna go work backwards with my stories. So yesterday, we had a meeting to kind of get an idea of where we are this year in order to help plan for next year. So we know right now that we need a new network in our school district. It's very, very costly. Um, we need to do um, all of our access points or the majority of our access points to the tune of about four hundred thousand dollars need to be replaced. And we need to do some network connections to about the tune of another two hundred thousand dollars. So we're looking at about a six hundred thousand dollar um, network. Um. Redo in our district in order for all of our um, computers and our one-to-one initiatives and everything to work. They're at the end of their life. They, they've been here over ten years. Um, it, it, it's time. So when we started uh, yesterday, the four of us, Mr. Trammell, um, and Dr. Sullivan, myself, and Mrs. Gunn, we were sitting there. We were kind of looking and trying to figure out a way that where we could not put the expense of this network on the taxpayers, but figure out a way to use a lot of our Easter money in order to pay for the majority of it. So when we were doing that, we had this great plan. It's like written over there on the wall. Um. I had this great plan all worked out, but then as I was going through later in the day, we found out when we got to special ed and the school choice revolving account. Um, we did not, we have sent some students out of district this year that have needed to go out of district. It's, it's, it's just the children who we have. Um, but we didn't have enough money in the budget for that. So then we had to go to a plan B with our budget. We had to figure out how are we going to pay for our vocational tuitions that were covered in the budget. But we had a significant, about a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar overage in special education out of district tuition. So. With that said, we scrapped everything and we started over with Plan A. So I'm going to have you take out those um, STGR drafts that I just gave you, the budget presentation that I gave you. And I'm gonna start by telling the story. So the story for next year is we have six hundred thousand dollars in network that we must do in order to make our district um, network work. It's a must do. It's not optional. Um, if you look at the first slide um, under STGR drafts, it shows our out of district vocational tuitions. And I did it over a history for you, so you can see um, where we were in FY nineteen and now where we are in FY twenty four. The good news is in FY twenty four, this is worst case scenario that I have. As of right now, there are three extra uh, people put into that forty-four. Um, it was four extra, but I did get one today. This was the worst case scenario. So there is the potential that I could remove three people to the tune of sixty thousand dollars um, later this month out of that number. But I wanted to give you worst case scenario. Okay, and if you look at the trends, you can see that Southwick was sending lots and lots of people out. And then all of a sudden, it's starting to shift. And with more and more and more students from the Granville, town of Granville are going out of district. Um, it's disproportionate to the number of students that they have coming to our district to going out of district.
Now, calling one, so.
Oh.
The, the third bar is each FY is Granville, in the middle is following.
Sorry. So then if you go to the next page, we're gonna look at added district vocational cost. So you can see in FY nineteen where we were. And then you can look at where we're going to be in FY twenty four. We're at nine hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in added district vocational cost. That's not something that I can not pay. It's not something that I can tell people they can't go by law. If we do not offer a program at our CTEC, they are entitled to go to either Westfield Technical Academy or to Smith.
Yes, so my question, and I don't know if you have these numbers, um, but if you could get them, if you don't have them for me. So my question is approximately per pupil cost for CTEC versus Westfield Technical Academy and Smithville and Smithville, I can.
Well, the numbers for this, if you take the nine fourteen and divide it by the forty-four, these, for each kid, it costs twenty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars. That's what it's costing us per child to send them out of district. CTEC's obviously lower than that.
Right.
Now, was that included in this?
Yeah. I can, I can exactly tell you where CTEC is. So what CTEC does, CTEC takes our average over three years. And it gives us a cost. But because they have students who come from not one of our seven communities, we get a break. So we have this year, our average number of students at CTEC is fifty-eight. And we are paying nine hundred twenty-nine thousand for fifty-eight children.
So that's sixteen thousand seventeen. So it's four thousand and a bit less. Four thousand fifty dollars.
But the issue really is the numbers because we got fifty-eight going to CTEC and forty-four going out.
Right, and the interesting thing on the numbers, which is what Superintendent Willard was talking about is, it's, I don't think when the the towns put the regional agreement together, did they necessarily think about this? Because you've got eighty-some percent, eighty what percent of the kids coming from Southwick?
Eighty-three, eighty-four percent.
In that area, twenty-one kids out of those eighty-three percent are going out of district. We've got twenty-one kids from Granville out of twelve percent going out of district. Obviously, if we looked at that on a graph from a personality perspective, there's a huge disproportionality of usage on there. How the towns address that, don't know. But that, that may be something that the three of them have to get together and go, okay. How, how do we deal with this? Do we, do we just look at it over the next couple of years and see how it goes? Is it a trend? Is this something that's gonna happen all the time? I mean, it's, it's, it's funny because these numbers keep going up.
Yeah.
Um, so I don't know. I mean, it's, it's an interesting little situation.
I think what we need to look at is what are the programs I have that they're going to um, that are not offered at CTEC? And is there a push toward getting those programs either in CTEC or in our pathways programs? And I, because I think that's one way to, to remedy the problem. Um, I think that first of all, the, the problem though needs to be identified and communicated.
Right, and, and I just want to be clear, a lot of our kids, believe it or not, get into aviation, a lot of are in collision, um, plumbing, electrical, um. Uh, a little science.
I'm assuming agriculture.
Yes.
I mean, those are things that I don't think anybody's gonna have the functions to actually go and replicate that.
Right, yeah. Or the plumbing or the electrical. Um, the one that, that Joe's really looking at is the uh, programming and web development. That would be a big one, and if we could get that innovative pathway, we could bring some of our kids here. But yes, we do have every single one program that our kids are going to. Um, the next one is uh, the special ed out of district costs. Um, it's the second slide. Um, if you look at FY twenty-three, this is the problem that I was telling you that we realized yesterday morning. Um, so correctly budgeted was five hundred thirty-five thousand. That's where we were um, last year when we were preparing our budget. Over the course of the year, we are at seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. So if you look at that, that is a significant increase of money that we had to come up with this year. And then next year, because you all know about the fourteen percent increasing cost that we talked about, plus we have some additional kids coming in. Plus, so we not in the situation that we are in this year. Um, I did build in um, out of school choice, so it's not calling costing the taxpayers any money, a little bit of a cushion. So in case we have children who do go out of district next year, we won't be caught in the situation we are this year where we don't have the money for. And if we don't use it, it still stays in school choice revolving. It does not cost taxpayers anymore. Um, but if you look at the increase between the special ed out of district costs and the vocational out of district cost, it's six hundred and nine thousand dollars in one year. That's seventy-five thousand dollars more than what we're getting in required local contribution. I just think about that. Those are two fixed costs. And they're already seventy-five thousand dollars more than the required local contribution.
So a concern of mine also is the age of the students that are requiring the out of district placement because i- am I correct that they're going to continue to require it as they age through the programs? So, so it's not, th- this will be a continued increased cost in the future.
So that was a discussion we actually had. Um, one of the ones that we um, sent out this year, um, Erin, Robin and myself, we spoke today, our hope, it was in the next year or two, um, we can either create a program here in district um, and get him back. Um. But our hope is to get him back. Another one, I, I don't know. But I don't know. Um, the good news is that we have created some special education programs in our district. So although they do come at a cost, uh, we created the social emotional program at Powder Mill School. So the cost of the district is a hundred and four thousand. Um, but the added district cost, if we sent the students out, would have been a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, the social emotional program at Woodland School, the cost of that program is a hundred fifty thousand, but if we sent the students out, it would be two hundred thousand. And the program for children with autism costs us a hundred forty-nine thousand dollars to run. But if we looked at the added district costs, it's four hundred fifty thousand. I can tell you, we are going to have to create a program for children with autism in the next few years at Powder Mill School. Um, because the, the children who are in this program are going to be moving their way through and they are eventually going to be coming to Powder Mill School.
So right now, on this slide where it says program for children with autism, that's at Woodland?
Yes. Sorry, I should have had that written in there. I'm sorry. It's at Woodland, yes. Yes, and that's where we hope when we develop that program, that there's a chance that we can um, bring a student or two back. Um, my next slide that I wanted to show you is the net school spending ranking by district. So when, this year I am going to have to come in, and not I, but we are gonna have to come in and ask for some discretionary line item studies because there's nothing that I can do. Um, what, what I want everybody to see is that we are the third from the bottom, or if you see that three, we're at one oh three. There's those eight school districts that are below us that actually spend less in net school spending than we do um, in our school district. The other school districts spend more in net school spending. So we bring forward a very, very conservative budget. I will also be honest, I did take out all the technical regional schools because they are their own beast and I it's not really comparing apples to apples. So I, I did take them out. But that is a live link. Um, the district NS profiles that you can click on um, on the Dussey website.
Pam, you does that make sense with her?
I, this is hard for me to see because it's.
Yeah, no. So what she did is she looked at all the schools. So we only spend a hundred and three percent of the net school spending. So we're only three percent over what we're obligated to do from the state or between chapter seven and the local contribution. So we're only going to the taxpayers for three percent more than what they budget forcibly act, act, that creates any. That is so low on the district side. When you look at this throughout the entire state of Massachusetts, there are some up there that are, there's thirteen school, fifteen school districts that are above two hundred and twelve percent of net school spending. So we are certainly on the lower end. Obviously, you add, I don't know what that number's gonna come up to, but we're gonna be adding to that. So we'll be.
So we're that number three. So there's two number threes. I was looking at the wrong number. There's a number three on the right.
I'm assuming the three is three schools. So one of those three.
Three schools, yes.
So there's only eight schools below us in the entire state. Now, I'm assuming we're gonna move up that ladder this year with what we're faced with, but I'm assuming that's every school is gonna run into this exact same problem.
Absolutely.
Everybody's gonna get hit with this.
Yes, this is not just an us issue this year. So if you go to the um, next page to require local contributions, um, I just want you to see that um, they did, that is where we went up. We went at five hundred twenty-four thousand. But again, like I told you, yes, our added district tuitions are six hundred and nine thousand. So we can't even cover the fixed costs for that. So when I'm gonna present the budget to you now, the highlights to the budget are that we did have created three in district special education programs. Um, we do have a plan for the network upgrade that I'm going to go over in a minute. Um, we are slowly and quickly going through our E and D funds and our school choice funds. So we cannot keep using, we, we're using a million fifty-five to offset our school budget this year when we're only bringing in six hundred and So we cannot keep using, we, we're using a million fifty-five to offset our school budget this year when we're only bringing in six hundred and thirty-three thousand. You you can't keep operating like that with school choice. It's go, it's going to be gone. Um, and that's only going to have a greater impact on the taxpayers. Uh, we had, do have a significant increase in our out of district vocational tuition. We have a significant increase to our special education out of district tuition. And believe it or not, this budget that we're bringing forward has five point six FTE positions cut. From the previous year's budget. Five point six. We did add one position, which was the systems coordinator this year, but five point six um unit A positions have been cut from this budget. I'm sorry, this slide doesn't go with everything else. Um, it's it's from something, but. Um, so the Easter, Easter capital costs. So I wanna let you know that in this year's budget, we are putting in. Um, one point four million. One point four eleven six one two. What, where's that coming from? I'm gonna give you these in a minute. Um, we did have four positions in our budget. Um, from putting into Easter, we, after with the special ed situation that we had yesterday and figuring out the network issue. We had to increase it to two more positions in the Easter budget. Um, we do have the HVAC upgrade because of um. Inflation, we have gone, we had it at about five hundred thousand, but after talking with the supervisor of buildings and grounds, Eric Wyckander. We have to keep it somewhere between five and seven hundred thousand. Um, so Eric is working on getting an RFP. Um, that meets the federal procurement laws, because when you use federal money, you have very specific um procurement laws we have to follow. The network access points. Um, are three hundred thousand and um our IT director, Garland Green, is working on an RFP. To meet the federal procurement laws for that. So we plan on using. Um, the majority of our Easter money. Um, on capital costs that we will not have to put on our taxpayers to between eight hundred thousand and a million dollars of capital costs.
Is this the last year research?
It is.
So what happens to those six positions next year?
That is another great question. Two of those positions um are going to be eliminated. They were interventionist positions that we put in due to the acceleration roadmap. Um, the other four, we are going to have to put into the budget next year.
And the other four, are they, I know some of them are special education program um. Positions, are they all special education?
The five oh four coordinator will have to go back.
Yeah.
There's two special ed positions that have to go back.
Three special ed positions.
Three special ed and two interventionists that will have to go back. Um, the capital costs, um I do have to switch this slide um because. Uh, it it's actually three hundred thousand I'm going to have to ask for, because it wasn't until late in the day and I wasn't gonna redo it, because it was in color and I didn't wanna waste it. But the network upgrade um is actually going to have to be a hundred and fifty thousand. For the access points, because it's three hundred thousand plus a hundred and fifty thousand for the access points. Um, a grounds utility truck for sixty-five thousand, a maintenance van for forty-five thousand. And to replace the flooring in the PMS stairwells and add UV window films to protect the new flooring, forty thousand. So that is where we are. What are we doing?
Window films to protect the flooring?
That's correct. Current flooring is damaged. It's a fishbowl. Or ceiling glass in there.
I don't have my Easter. Hmm, two, out of Easter, two monies. We are going to be doing um the.
We're offsetting two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the out of district special ed tuitions that we went over.
Yeah.
We're gonna install the vaping sensors for thirty-five thousand dollars, seven hundred and fourteen dollars, and we'll do the. Part of the course switch replacement portion of the Wi-Fi network for a hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-two. Dollars.
So we're spending the majority of our money on. Those out of district costs that we didn't, weren't expecting, and the rest is actually really going to capital. Um, which is all a benefit to our taxpayers, because we will not have to come to them for this capital in the future. And we need to get this network up and. Working for next year. Um, and it's it's a big job. So here is um the. Budget sheets.
I think that's an important point, that the taxpayers understand is how much of the funding is going towards capital. Because of the compounded interest. That the towns end up paying on those capital o- over the years.
It should be double, double.
Yeah.
I'd say I'm.
So we could save on staples?
Camera and color, you give me a paper. Writing the budget.
I thought you did try and print in color. I apologize for that. I don't know how it happened.
And but no staple?
No, no, scratched, stripped.
I denied the statement request.
I like the. Since it does come uncrimped pretty decent.
Is the gentle, the ugly of the budget. So that's the story that I just told you. Now, these are the numbers that go with the story. You have it?
No, I've got it, but you don't.
I know, I don't know why.
You have to make yourself there.
Um, so the total operating budget this year is twenty-seven um million, eight hundred sixty-two thousand, eight hundred ninety-five dollars. That is what we are going to be asking the towns for. However. I wanna make it very clear that we are also offsetting the budget again. With a hundred and ten thousand in rural school aid that is going strictly to out of district vocational tuitions. We have um. Of one million fifty-five thousand that is going to be going to six hundred ninety-five thousand to out of district sped tuitions. And three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred thirty-six dollars to vocational out of district tuitions. We have a hundred and ten thousand from the circuit breaker revolving. That is going towards the special um ed, uh out of district tuitions. So all of our out of district special ed tuitions in this upcoming year are once again being funded out of. That eight hundred ninety-two thousand is being paid out of circuit breaker and school choice revolving. There is one line item for a hundred seventy-five thousand that is embedded in the budget, and that's for our programs at um Lord Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative. Um, the one million four hundred and eleven dollars, those are those capital projects I told you about in those six addition, those six teaching positions. And then um the grants for the IDA, the MECHO grants, the title. Uh, for A, title two A, and the title one. Those are all additional funds that are, we are offsetting the budget by. I am going to ask for these back. I will pass them out to you now, so you can see. I just have people's names on them, and I do wanna shred them when I leave. Um, but I just want, if you want to look at um. There are packets of three, you can just turn them around. I I do want these back, though, at the end. Um, because you can see. The cost of them, I think, uh, Tim comes already seen them. Uh, but I want you to be able to see what it is that we're spending and um that we are actually doing. What we feel is fiscally responsible to. We know this is a tough budget. We know that if you turn to the next page, that we are still going to have to be asking for a five hundred twenty-nine thousand dollar discretionary line item for Southwood. An eighteen thousand discretionary for Talon and a seventy-six thousand for uh Granville.
Where is it?
We're under assessments number five, line twenty-four, sorry.
Oh, the one above the yellow line?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Those are what we call a discretionary. Everything else is non-discretionary. Um. Again, this is draft. So I did upgrade from the cherry sheet, the cherry sheet that we got from the uh governor. Only had six hundred and um. Uh, seven hundred twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy in for um transportation reimbursement. It did up back to eight hundred thousand, pretty confident. Um, that under, on the assessment page, we're gonna be able to get at least eight hundred thousand. Um, I appropriated eight seventy-five for E and D. We do have some flexibility in E and D. Um, to add a little bit more if the school committee so chooses to do so. Um. There is the potential um that um. We have those three additional uh students who can come off the vocational tuitions, and that would save us about sixty thousand dollars. So what I'm presenting to you tonight is the worst possible case scenario going forward. Um. I'm trying to be as honest as I can and tell you this story, and this is who we are, and this is where we live. And these are the kids that are coming to us now. These are the schools that they want to go to. Um, before, it was always college prep, college prep. A lot of our kids now are really going in um to the world of uh trades and. I wish my kids were going to electrical and plumbing. I mean, I think about. Those jobs and how hard it is to find an electrician or a plumber. I'm glad to see that we have students going into these fields. Um. Uh. As we know, there's always the chance that um this uh. Chair, that the uh legislator could come up. Right now, we're only at thirty dollars per student. There's a chance that they could go up to sixty dollars per student. That would give us an additional thirty-eight thousand dollars in our budget. There's somebody out there who's um promoting more money in rural school aid. There's potentially some more money. Um, but we wouldn't know that until after our budget is passed, but that would save money in our school choice and our E and D. So it would help us next year in our budget when we have to add those teachers back. So. I mean, it's not gonna help us this year, but it's a good way to think about planning for next year.
So Jen, I have a question.
I hope I have an answer.
Well, I, we keep hearing, like, in the news anecdotally, that the governor's budget is so school-friendly and blah, 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 blah. So why? What what is it that's so school-friendly about her budget?
Okay, that is an absolutely great, 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 great point. So it is, she's, she has passed a budget that is almost to. Like, year six, out of year seven or something, out of the Student Opportunity Act. We are hold harmless. No matter how many additional, so they give you additional money for students um that are ELL. They give you additional money for students who are at the poverty level. They give you more money for students who go and attend vocational schools. However. Because we're in hold harmless. We're, they're giving us four million dollars more than what we should be getting. So say. We should have gone up. Another hundred and a hun- a million dollars. The government's like, we're not giving you another million dollars. You've already got four million dollars. So it's still, until we are out of the hold harmless situation, the. Only money, the only money we will ever see from the federal government. Is that thirty, is the money per pupil. What we need to advocate for. Is regional transportation. She's saying she's funding it at ninety percent. Well, that money, that amount of money that is right there is not ninety percent. I bumped it up, because I'm pretty confident. We need to see regional transportation being reimbursed. We need to see circuit breaker being fully funded. We need to continue to see the free meals, and we need to continue to see um rural school aid. Being funded at the level in which it needs to be funded, because we were just talking last week, we had a meeting with our legislators. And we were saying, it is more expensive to run smaller school districts than it is to run larger school districts, but we can't. Do all the programming that you can do in a larger district. We have kids who are one-off here, one-off here. We can't create a program for that. So we have to send them out. We had, we lost twenty kids this year. But we didn't lose them in one grade. We lost a little bit here, 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 here. We can't just go cutting teachers. So it is so difficult to be running. A rural school district right now with these declining enrollments who are in hold harmless. Um, I wish I had the information. I actually talked to um Senator Baldiga. Have my phone on me either.
Representative.
Representative Baldiga, and um I gave him some talking points. Um, and. I think it's seven percent. Um, seven percent of us. I'll get, I'll get, I can actually get my computer if we take a break in a minute, and I'll get you the numbers. You would be shocked to know. The number of, actually, can you give me a minute so I can get that fact for you, because I think you will find it extremely fascinating about the SOA. It answers your question.
So, and I have a follow-up question.
Okay.
I ask this every year.
I know.
But.
Okay.
It's my brain.
Hold harmless, what the heck is that again?
So the way that they got this set up. From a chapter seventy reimbursement perspective. We're supposed to be able to get X amount of dollars for X amount of kids.
Yes.
What they're saying is the whole harmless says that we will never, from the state of Massachusetts, give you less money. Than what we gave you the year before. So from a budget perspective, you don't have to worry about. The amount of money that the state giving is going down. It only ever goes up.
So what was the jackpot year? How long have we been in a whole harmless?
Well, a long timeline. So what's happened is, we got all this extra money, right? And then every year, it keeps getting worse, because the thirty-some dollars that we get. We got that last year. So it keeps going up, and what happens is if our. Our attendance has been going down. Which means that technically, if we look at the per pupil amount, we should be getting less. Can't get less, because the state holds us harmless. So that gap keeps getting bigger. So that's what Jen was talking about. There is a four million dollar difference right now. In the money that we get from chapter seven. Based on what we should get if somebody. Started with a clean slate and said, South Lake, Collin, Grandville has X amount of kids, they get X amount of money. Well, that amount is four million below what we actually get. So if we were to make that up, we'd have to go to the taxpayers and say, we're, if we wanna be able to run operations that we regret last year, we're four million dollars short. So that's the hold harmless. All it means is that we're not, they're not gonna pay us. Less than what they paid us the year before, and on top of that, they're giving us thirty dollars a kid more this year than they did last year.
So if we're in hold harmless, how many districts across the state are in?
A lot. So listen to this back, okay? It says over seventy-one percent. Four hundred eighteen point eight million of all the new chapter seventy money. Is going to thirty-two. Ten percent of all the districts in the Commonwealth.
Yeah, that was mine.
Almost ninety-three percent. Five hundred forty-four point eight million of all new chapter seventy money is going to a hundred and six, or thirty-three percent. Of the districts in the Commonwealth. Two hundred twelve. Or sixty-seven percent of all districts in the Commonwealth. Are left sharing only a total combined seven percent. Forty-one point five million of all new chapter seventy money.
So I think that might be important information to add to this and share with the towns. Um, because they are probably, the townspeople are. Probably getting the limited source of information that about, you know, oh, this, the governor's money is so school-friendly.
Mm-hmm. Right, but that's why regional transportation. That can better fit us. Circuit breaker, that can better fit us. Um. But.
A circuit breaker, that's not a miniature, right? Like, what are you talking to?
Circuit breaker is, and I'm sure uh Ms. Gunn can explain it way better than me. It's after you spend, you could explain it better than.
Yeah, so so circuit breaker is a. Or special education costs over the foundation, which is about forty-six thousand per child. So if we have, for example, uh. A tuition that is at a hundred thousand to use around her. Um, we can use, there's a whole system that we have to go through. So we say, okay, we spent. Thirty-eight thousand, whatever, beyond what the foundation was, they will then give us back seventy-five percent of that. So it's meant to help schools who have. These, these large out of district expenses.
It's like meeting your deductible health insurance and you go and rent, and they're, and they're reimbursing you at seventy-five percent. That's exactly what it is.
And if you look at it, we use that. So the year before was eighty-five thousand. Last year, we got a hundred and ten thousand for circuit breaker. We use it every year to offset. Some of our other outgoing. Um.
So it's like an insurance policy kicking in.
Yeah.
Any extra money that you pay above a certain amount. They'll reimburse it seventy-five percent of that money.
And as Jen was saying, yes, and as Jen was saying, at this point, transportation is not included. Um, I was on a call yesterday where they were saying that. Think they're going to phase in the. Um I was on a call yesterday where they were saying that I think they're going to phase in the transportation over the next three years.
So transportation for special education.
Yes.
And that doesn't go for LPVAC or that does?
Yes, our transportation.
Oh, yeah.
It does, but we don't get any break money if we would get.
Right.
Breaks in the government.
Into the circuit breaker account, they start accounting for it in there, that we'd be able to get seventy-five percent of that above. Anybody that goes over, we'd be able to count for that. So that would help.
I have everybody here. If you have any questions, I'm building the ground. We did add a little bit extra into, uh I did mostly do a level service. I did speak with Eric Wykander. Um he made a really good point and it's a little it's a little bit now. But for every dollar we spend now, we save five dollars later in preventative maintenance. So I think we added like thirty-six thousand dollars to the budget for preventative maintenance. And um I. Think that's a wise use of our money and I don't feel like it's being frivolous. I think that that's a little bit of preventative maintenance now will go a long way. Instead of having a huge capital expense later. Um I have uh Garland Green, our I T director here. Um he's been doing huge amounts of research to figure out. Why our internet and our network connection is not working right up at the regional school. If you have any questions here. Robin is here um to answer any questions on the special education and our building principals in here and Jenny Sullivan is is here. To answer if you have any um curriculum or any other questions.
I got a question for Garland on the on the network upgrade. We've got this broken down to network upgrade and access points. Are these basically hanging yet? Would we need one without? Can we have one without the other? Or do we need them all?
I'll stand to you. First of all, the access points. Let's take a look at those. Those are the actual radios that get connected to. Seventy uh seventy-nine cents, eighty percent of all those go out of life uh on December thirtieth. Which means there's no possible way I can upgrade it. I can't put anything to it. Um so those connect to a broader network. They connect to our switching network, which is also connected to our private network. Yeah, that network itself, our main core switch is is twenty years old. So what we've done and 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 first of all, I want to commend you. You've gotten as much as you can. You cannot milk this thing anymore. In the meantime, what we've done is we've added more machines, more machines using a different radio frequency, which means it can download more information. At a faster cost, completely tapped it out. So you can't just do one. I've looked into that. I've really, really have. See what I can do. I'm still waiting to determine whether or not we can get away with using our pre-existing fiber. At first, I was not at all. And feel very comfortable with that. It's twenty-year-old fiber.
Yeah.
Um however, after having enough conversations and things like this. cautiously optimistic that we can we can repurpose that and we shouldn't have any issues. And if we do, we have some money built in this budget and we can repair that. And so. The good part of this is is that we will have a network that can meet the needs certainly within the next five years. Because every time a new model comes out, it comes out with a new speeds, a new opportunity to consume more and more bandwidth. So we're going to get there, right? The next question that we'll ask ourselves is once we get the new car smell in here and everything's work working great, then what? Right? What are our next steps on the pedagogical side of things, right? Because we're going to have a brand new network and it's going to be spoken about.
Yeah.
And we don't want to be all about downloading YouTube videos. We want to be able to put it to work in a pedagogical sense. Unfortunately, you can't. It's just not just not possible. All right, thank you.
Yes. The only thing I'm worried about is. We're sure I don't think we're bringing a budget forward the town that is. Got fluff in it at all. But. The towns obviously through the elections have the or the town meetings have the ability to either thumbs up or thumbs down the budgets. If they thumb down. They're expecting us to go back and take a look at this and tighten it up. The only worry that I've got is having these capital pieces in the school budget. Because we they take separate votes on the school budget in the capital. If that, we've got three hundred thousand dollars sitting in that network access that we're that we're doing to his Easter.
They don't have to approve that. That's that's us.
What do you mean they don't have to approve it?
That's us using our Visa funds for that.
Doesn't matter. It's in our budget. If they if they can thumbs up or thumbs down the budget. And if the budget get if the budget.
Yeah, but it's if if it's not used by Easter, it's going to go into capital expense and they're gonna have a harder pill swallowing that one.
Well, it the the only thing I'm worried about is if, let's say, it goes through and our capital right now is two hundred thousand. And the towns go, okay, fine. We'll accept the capital. Well, if they say no to the overall budget. We've got to go take a look at it. We can leave it in Easter. That's fine. But we're gonna have to find money to drop it down somewhere else. And that's going to either be on the educational side, on teach somewhere. They're gonna be looking for us to cut costs. That's the only danger. If putting. Capital equipment purchases in that major budget, because if Garland gets the network upgrade for a hundred and fifty thousand. But we don't get approved for the for the access point and we need it, then that's gotta be in there. We can't, we can't cut it.
But Rob, you're sorry, but the opposite is what happens. Historically, the opposite.
Okay, no, that's fine. I just want to be upfront with everybody. That's the danger.
I believe that in in terms of the regional agreement with regard to the budget and the capital, we got two different thresholds of approval that are necessary.
For the regular budget, three for the capital.
Exactly. And and so I my concern is more the opposite.
Okay, well, that's fair enough. I mean, so on here, on our capital side, we've got a network upgrade that's going to be one fifty, not fifty, right?
Yeah, one fifty, yeah.
Okay, so we got the utility truck for sixty-five grand. We got a maintenance van for forty-five thousand. How on the scale of one to ten, Eric, are those are those trucks?
So we spent over fifteen thousand dollars maintaining those two vehicles in the last calendar year. Uh one of them is twenty years old, the other is sixteen. And uh I'm gonna have to take one of them off the road pretty soon. I don't think that we can absorb any.
So when.
This is something I've brought to the committee five times.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not. I I just that kind of that kind of info. When we go to the towns and we explain to them what's in this capital budget, that kind of detail, I think needs to be included so that they know why we're putting it on there. Because if they look at this and go, oh, three hundred fifty thousand, fine. No, we're not gonna approve it, cut it down. Well, I don't know what you want to cut off. I mean, if we need the hundred fifty thousand for that, because we if we get the access points and we don't get the 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 network upgrade. It's useless, right?
Yeah.
You you need both.
The data's gotta run.
Right, exactly. It's like putting gas in the car and then taking the wheel off the car.
That's right.
So. Now the flooring. I mean, we're looking at forty thousand out of this. We've got to replace it.
In my opinion, it's.
And then we've got to put the.
The same flooring as when I was here. Necessarily friendly.
Yeah, I mean, look, I have no problem going to war for the network upgrade, the utility truck, the maintenance van, developing the data. We're great. What's the what's the what's the, we better have this or.
Wouldn't it be helpful if we were to provide an error through the justification?
I think that probably would be helpful, yeah.
So I can certainly do.
Okay, that I think any, we don't need. Balloons info. I mean, but something from a taxpayer's perspective, if they're looking at this capital equipment or the capital class. Here's what we need. Here's why we need it. Here's what happens if you don't approve it. That way, it makes it a lot easier for them to go look at it. Okay, I may not like this. But how do I not vote for it? Because it's needless. Because if we don't justify it. If they're gonna be looking at, I mean, looking at something, if they're if they're gonna be getting a bill, we're looking for a question of, look, five hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. For for discretionary spending on the school on the school budget. And another three, whatever, eighty-five percent of three hundred, let's say another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for capital that Southwick's gonna pay. Any extra detail we've got that is going to justify why it needs to get done, I don't think it's gonna be a waste of time.
Anticipating some questions with regard to technology.
Yeah.
If they could come to the annual town meetings, it would be so super helpful. Yes, I have them right here. So I it just um I think um over the next week, I'll probably be able to shave off another hundred thousand dollars. So I'm thinking that, you know, every. Southbrook is probably gonna be looking at like a four twenty-nine instead of a five twenty-nine. I'm hoping I can do that. Um but in draft number one, I just want to make sure that I put all the vocational tuitions in that are potentially in there. I have not offset anything yet um with Jenny's Mecko grant for transportation. And we still have a very hefty E and D um that we can probably add another fifty thousand dollars to.
That's like a fucking leap though, because that E and D that that we've been very lucky.
We have.
With that E and D coming in and and basically. If anybody doesn't have it, that E and D fund is, if we do a good job. On the budget, there's excess money. That money goes into the E and D fund. Now, as you tighten up a budget. And you become more conservative with that budget and you try to live to that budget. There's less and less excess to the budget, which means there's less money that goes in E and D. So it's there. We can use extra. But I don't know whether, now typically, at least the last two years that I've been involved with this, we've been moving. Three quarters of a million to more than that amount of money from E and D. Well, as you tighten up the budget, I don't know where they're gonna find three quarters of a million dollars. That is gonna flow back into that E and D for next year. So that means that goes down. Next year, we may not have. Eight hundred fifty thousand dollars that we can put in E and D. We may only have four hundred thousand dollars that we can put into E and D. So it it becomes a. Right, now it doesn't mean anybody's like managing it. If anything, it's it's. You're managing it correctly and you're doing a good job. It's just as you get better at it. Those E and D funds tend to kind of dry up a little bit. So I think we've got to be careful about that, too. Yeah, we can throw it in there.
Right.
I don't know. I mean, you do it today, fine. It lowers this year, but next year's gets higher. So it's a. I I don't.
Yeah, and that's why I put in here highlights of the budget. These are the final years of significant offset with E and D and school choice funds. Because there it gets a shrinking budget. It's it's. Spending a million, taking in six thirty-four.
So why is school choice shrinking? We're not taking in fewer school choice students.
We are, because we've gone from six, six classes down to five. So we can't just keep adding as many as uh we have in the past. We don't have as many opening teachers to react. Okay, so the reason behind that, though, should be. But we're gonna open some school choice seats right now. And I spoke to a teacher today who's brown cells.
All right, anybody have any other questions on? Budget. For the draft budget.
I could just have the draft things back when you're done. I need to know it. Well done. Well done.
Okay, we're done with the budget. Those of you that are.
Thank you, everybody.
You're released.
For now.
All right, policies, right? Are you done? Are we done?
I'm done.
Okay.
You guys have come with me.
No, we're done. Okay, policies. So we have got. E B A A, we brought this up in policy committee last week. Actually, felt like.
Yeah.
This is in front of you. We are looking tonight to waive the three readings. This is something that was brought to us or requested by the town side to it. Basically, Eric's here. If anybody's got any questions, to summarize this from a. Time perspective, they are just looking for us to be able to purchase more fuel-efficient vehicles in the future if we can. Some of the vehicles that we have on site don't even qualify for this policy. Right, Eric? Or is there, want to give a little bit more of a?
If if it's permissible, quickly, um so this is a part of a larger initiative from the town Southwick to become a green. Um there's two, two things that they're expecting from the committee. Uh number one is this fuel-efficient vehicles policy that you have in front of you. Um the second thing is an energy reduction plan. Uh we are to uh review it as a committee. Uh you are you are to review it as a committee and decide whether or not to adopt it. Um it was just sent to me the first draft of it on Friday, so it's not available for our discussion here. It's I I haven't worked. We can't get it on the agenda. I just want you to know what to expect. So there's there's two asks from the town. Um the first of them is this and then the energy reduction plan. Both of them are um. They're very low impact. Um it's 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 really a from a cost perspective. All of these measures are are gonna benefit the budget. There, these are these are cost savings measures. They're not um. They're not gonna increase our expenses in the name of uh being greedy. It's it's both uh return on investment as well as um conservation. So the the policy that you have in front of you now um is just laying out guidelines that the district will use going forward to purchase vehicles, which we don't really plan to do. Uh outside of the two utility vehicles that we mentioned earlier tonight, and both of those are exempt from this policy.
Right, I'm saying remember. That you brought this to us in five months, so I was seeing in reply.
So we do operate um uh we operate four vehicles, fleet of four vehicles currently. We have two um regular standard minivans that we use. One for uh transport of items between buildings, I T, food service, stuff like that. The food service department is operating another one. And they're endeavors to feed the folks over at St. Mary's. Um so that's another vehicle we're operating and then the two maintenance utility vehicles that are exempt.
And the two that we um are that are not exempt, like it's an O eight and an eleven.
Correct.
Um and I've. They currently needing the guidelines?
Uh they are. Uh the eleven is, the O eight is right on the cusp.
But we're not looking at needing to purchase any anytime soon, right?
Uh we we believe that those vehicles will need to be replaced sometime in the next four to six years, if the district decides to continue offering. These garages are really stored outside. They're stored outside. Those are the fields on. We're in the process now of searching for a vendor to do that. Uh previously, we had our in-house garage and our in-house mechanic that did all of that work. But since the LPVAC uh transition for transportation, it's been sort of on an as needed basis through various vendors. Two two vendors here in town, uh one of which is closed. So we have, I don't have an answer for it.
Is there like a wash?
Although, I mean, that. In something that sits outside is rotting, play on. Yeah, go in New England, nothing lasts regardless. We don't, they don't see, vehicles don't see much salt. Um three out of four are really mainly operated on our our campus. They don't really leave. The the fourth is going just over the same area in the back. And as you know, when. Weather's terrible. We're we're not. So it doesn't see as much salt as like a fleet vehicle for at least apartment. You know, city bus or something.
So if they're not driven a ton, I mean, that's worse than driving. The mileage high or?
No, no, the mileage on our vehicles is very low. I have a I have a twenty-year-old truck that is forty-two thousand.
Well, I mean, what I'm getting at is hundred, localization, sometimes it's worse than overuse because. You know, a vehicle that sits and is not driven, it's not in a. Culture-controlled environment. Do we have any room for, I don't want to add money to the budget ever, but you know, like in the carport or something that we could, you know?
Well, it's it's something to be considered. We uh we're we're uh anticipating.
The park on pavement or?
Yeah, uh in a fenced-in light lighted fence. We have LPVAC vacating the premises. Their lease is up in June. Uh we should be taking over the garage for maintenance grounds use. Following that, it's five thousand square foot garage in three days. Um we should be able to get some of our equipment inside. My priorities are the hundred and sixty thousand dollar agricultural tractor. Um that needs to get inside, but the other vehicles as well. So, yeah, we we will definitely.
Thanks. Sure. All right, anybody got any questions on this? We're looking at tonight, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have two votes. We're gonna waive the three readings because this is very out of sorts. Um I didn't think we really needed three readings on this. Um and then we're gonna vote to approve the files, so. All right.
Okay.
Superintendent Willard, you're up.
Move to approve appointment of interim director of finance and operations and chief procurement officer Joseph Trammell recommended.
So moved.
All right, can I get a show of hands to accept the motion? Aaron, let the motion, so the motion passes seven zero zero. Let's say a non-voting member, Lucas. I'm sixteen.
Wave additional readings of policy E E B A A, E E B A A dash appendix A recommended. It's so moved.
I'm sorry. Just keep adding what?
Do the next one faster.
Wait, anybody have any questions or comments or?
Can you say that again?
I knew that was coming. Um, can I get a show of hands to accept the motion? Aaron, let the record show the motion passes seven zero zero. She is gonna have to read it again.
Policy E E B A A, policy E E B A A dash E appendix A recommended.
So moved.
Second.
All right, can I get a show of hands to accept the motion? All right, Aaron, the record, let the record show the motion passes seven zero zero.
Uh, move to approve the SRS program of studies twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, exploration of a single grade seven through twelve schedule recommended.
So moved.
Anybody got any questions on this?
Yeah.
We talked about last week.
Wow, so I was the first class to actually get block scheduling from freshman year to senior year. Why did we ever go from what used to be almost, right? Anyone know? I mean, I realize that was a long time ago.
Yeah, I don't know why. I mean.
Like, what was that?
A block system, I mean, it provides some, some project-based learning, finance for the expanded time um in the classes. I know, I know some of the advantages for parents and students is that they have four classes at one time as opposed to six to eight. I, I don't know the history of it. Um, I know Mr. Vincent brought it in. He was the principal at the time, so he could probably give us the historical um, history of, of, or the historical context of why it was brought into place at that time. Um, but I don't know if we have anyone up there still.
Semesters, right? Cuz it used to be.
That was here then, right?
It used to be, it used to have like, like classes throughout the whole year, right?
So before.
Yeah, you have many years ago. Whatever, got to do a study hall in there.
And normally people go to semesters, cuz you get more flexibility, you get more opportunities, you have more classes. Cuz a lot of times you have stepped, and then you end up going to eight, so you get two more options.
Yeah.
And you had a study hall.
Yeah.
Yeah, you did not have a study hall in your block study.
No.
Which one? It was, it, I worked in a district at the time that made the same move and went through years of, you know, selling it. At the time, it's important to remember that times were different twenty years ago. And the move for longer class periods was the push. And traditional schedules were seven periods a day, forty-five minutes or less. So the law block provided almost, you know, it provided almost twice that amount of time. And the transition, you know, understanding how students learn, providing three transitions, and you could do a video and a lesson the same day, or you could, you know, and project-based and all that. Writing labs and science labs. Um, but as the pendulum has switched, shifted and student learning has shifted with, with the smartphone and attention spans and, and all kinds of other needs that we have, we're looking back in another direction. But I don't think the direction is a seven-period forty-two-minute school day. It's probably, it's probably like sixty-minute classes. And somehow we gotta figure out how we can do seven or eight classes, still get that in. So um, I think the, the number one thing is it was just a different time and the rules and the, the philosophies about education have shifted again twenty years later.
And you guys are gonna do a study and we're gonna, we're gonna report back.
Or will this now kind of shift to Serena?
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, I mean.
He'll, he'll go straight for you.
It's actually have been something that has been um part of our tenure together for nine years. And I think when I first started, it was something that uh the previous superintendent, Dr. Barry, wanted us to look at. And after about eighteen months or two years, the school committee came back and didn't feel, they said they didn't want us to throw uh, the baby out with the bathwater and to change everything. And so we stuck, we stuck with our current schedule. Uh, I proposed it again during COVID because I felt that there were some advantages to going full year as opposed to half year. And um, it just didn't get to the support at the building level that, that it needed to move forward with that. So a lot of, we've done a lot of work around this. We've done a lot of studying around different types of schedules, the benefits of some. Um, but just, you know, what, what Superintendent Willard's talking about with the budget, the enrollment, the shifts in uh, in student learning, the, the data behind it, the science behind it, and what our students are getting into, it's all trending towards we need to do something different.
Yeah.
Uh, and coupled with us going from a seven to eight to nine into twelve, we've done our due diligence in trying to maintain the integrity of, of degree levels. Um, we just, we, we feel like we're in position where we need to start. So, um, so to answer your question, I think Serena's in, in goodness. I'm bored with it, but yeah, I mean, I think it's something that, that we'll continue to, I'll continue to support it where, where.
Since I'm asked to. Since it rea-, since it requires and will involve budgetary. I think it may be a great way for the two departments to maybe collaborate. I'm just throwing that out there. Then you can get with the assessments, right?
Yeah.
Maybe you can get rid of some other people there, save money.
Well, you know, a little, not to like speed it dead horse, but little things about keeping kids enrolled, you know. I grew up in Greenfield. Greenfield had, you know, an auto shop. We had, we had drafting, you know. I was able to take all those courses at Greenfield High, knowing that we don't have a mechanic any longer, but we have that facility. Is there any room for thought to maybe add a small engine program where, you know, say nine, ten, eleven grade, you can take a shop class where you can learn how to build and rebuild a lawnmower, stuff like that, like any sort of, you know, programs additional to what a tech school might offer, but we could, you know, supplement here. So a couple of things, we actually went up to Smith Vocational um because I wanted to bring in an electrical program to do the school year. Um, it's something that I don't believe the lower kind of value ladder is going to, to tackle. Um, and I thought that this would be a great opportunity for students and for the other schools in, in supporting district. Um, it is a monumental endeavor to get plumbing and electrical into schools. One of the things I didn't realize is that there's actually a almost like a non-compete clause, uh, uh, I can't have a program within ten miles of a school that already has that. So knowing that Western Tech Academy has that uh vocation or uh an electrical program, I can't, I can't do it uh here because it's a close proximity. The other thing that I wasn't aware of is that the endorsement of the electric, electricians union and the plumbers unions, they are, you, you need to work very, very closely with them because obviously they're very uh passionate about their, their trade and you, you need to get their blessing. They don't want to feel saturated. They don't want.
I taught you something I was gonna recommend, not knowing now about the ten-mile radius, yeah.
So, um, you know, the superintendent of, of this vocational school really thought we were on the right path and should put our focus towards the innovative pathways program that we have going forward. He thought by making that uh the priority with the internships that we have, it will help us with the graphics um and the technology classes that we're sending kids to W two eight for. Hopefully, we see some growth in that over the next couple of years. But there is, there is opportunity and there is the potential to look at putting in some chapter seventy-four programs in the school. Uh, electrical plumbing is not.
Even light car, you know.
Yeah, I mean.
Teaching, you know, a kid a difference between an Allen wrench and a.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, there's some programs that we could, we could look into.
All right, let's take a vote on this motion. Can I get a show of hands to accept the motion? Aaron, let the record show the motion passes seven zero zero. Right, right.
Yeah. Move to approve allowing for consent agenda and section two routine moving forward recommended.
What the heck does this mean?
Okay, so, all right, so that's, I'm reading, wait a minute. So, well, we've been, actually came up last summer at the uh training course I went to for, for um mask. There is a, an opportunity for something that we can use called the consent agenda. And what it is meant to do is basically a bucket of things that we just don't even have a conversation about, we never talk about, like, and things that are in the consent agenda for this meeting. Fundraisers, um, the homeschool policies that we approve. Right now, any, every one of those needs to get read aloud. We take a vote and what we can do is put these all in sort of a consent bucket that they'll get sent out. Aaron will send them out in our, in our packet. Here's the items that are in the consent agenda for this meeting. That does not mean that if there is one of these, let's say there's a fundraiser that you as a school kid member wanna find out answers on. What we do is when we get to the spot where you would approve the consent agenda, we make a motion to pull this one out of the consent agenda. If that happens, we then vote on that motion. That one gets pulled out, we hold it, we approve the consent agenda minus that one, and then we, then we put an approval for, we do a, an action item for that one that got pulled out, and then it gives us opportunity to talk about it.
Can we just ask questions without having to pull it, though?
Uh, yeah, we can ask questions. It's just a question of, do we need superintendent to read all of the things that are in there? If we have a question, well, you know what? I don't know, cuz if it's a consent agenda, it's gonna be voted on.
Right.
If you wanna ask questions on it, we've gotta pull it out.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I mean, for the almost two years I've been on the committee, the number of real questions that we, we haven't asked any on the homeschool things, cuz we haven't really given those. And even on the, on the fundraisers, we look at it. I mean, we approved them. Um, if we don't wanna do this, we don't have to do this. I was just trying to find a way to speed the meeting up, and these things kept coming up all the time. Does that make sense or no?
Oh, maybe he sees as it, Erica.
Yeah, correct, yep.
And it works well, works fine.
Yeah, cuz they're like, they're Monday.
And if you wanna ask questions, you can ask questions outside of the actual meeting itself, computer question or hot or.
Yeah.
Member.
Yeah, I mean, if you get, if you get the, the whole point of this is if you get the packet and you read it and you've got a question, you can shoot a question over to Jen or Aaron or somebody on Monday, get the answer back before the meeting, and then you don't have a question, and then we approve the consent agenda.
Or if you wanna pull it, you pull it.
Yeah, I mean, if there's something that we put in there, which I, I believe there will be, but we put something in there that you really wanna have a discussion on. When it gets to that point, somebody makes a motion to pull this item out of the consent agenda. We vote on that, that gets pulled, and then it just becomes a new action item that we do on the fly.
All right.
That make sense? Okay, so this is to approve us doing consent agenda in section two under routine. What we'll do is we take a quick vote to approve the consent agenda. It doesn't go under action items. So if we do have one that we wanna pull out, that gets pulled out and gets added to the action item section of the agenda. Make sense? All right. So can I get a show of hands to approve this going into our schedule? All right, Aaron, let the record show this passes seven zero zero.
I don't want to try to read all of it.
Um. Well, that kind of just. Now, we just, okay, now we're just gonna approve the consent.
Move to approve the consent agenda items as listed, recommended.
So.
If we're gonna do this.
I feel like that's a good question, though, right?
All right, can I get a show of hands to accept the motion? All right, so the motion passes seven zero zero.
Move to approve additional school choicy for the remainder of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Three seats in grade three, six seats in grade five, and one seat in grade eight recommended. So.
All right, so.
Six seats in one grade? You have all those kids like moved out of district and then, but they want to stay?
We have six, yeah, we've got six kids who want um comes into grade five. I've already spoken with Mrs. Carrier about it.
So get, where, what we want, there's a couple of things that have sort of come up on this. We've got, we, we've got kids during the year that move out of district, which technically opens up a seat. We don't wanna really get into a point where we're doing this week by week because then it becomes a, a big rigmarole. What I, I talked to Jen about that we've got a bunch of people right now to refer in the wing bowl. This is why we've got this approval here tonight. She's checked with the teachers, she's checked with the principals. We're fine opening up these seats to bring, to have these kids in here for the remainder of the school year. What I'm proposing is that we look at this, not in a monthly, we look at this sort of on a quarterly basis. Say, look, did we have any kids that left the district? Do we have kids that want in? Great, we can make it this orderly. It becomes something that is much more workable from your perspective, right?
Yeah, cuz we can keep a writing total. It'll be easier for us.
Yeah, so we're really only gonna add three extras, cuz we normally look at this at the end of the school year. And we look at what we're looking and anticipating for the next year, and we open up school choicy.
So these school choices that we're opening up are just for the remainder of this year?
No.
Well, they'll, once they're in those seats, then they're in those seats.
Nice saying.
Right.
And so those, these numbers go into next year's numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, which is a good thing for us.
Yes.
If we've got kids that we can bring into the district, then it doesn't affect class size. That's a good problem for us to have. We add kids to the district and we don't, and we're not worried about blowing the class sizes through the roof.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but typically for opening up school choice seats mid-year, it's for students that have moved out of district but want, wish to continue to remain in district.
For some, and there's some that we're just gonna, um, there's siblings that are here that got in and we didn't have seats for them.
And now we get.
Got it, okay.
So this, this, in that way, looking at this at a quarterly basis, we'd be actually able to deal with these things in a more timely manner than looking at them on an annual basis. Now it's a one and done, where this way, if things happen, where kids move out in October and we had no idea, well, if we would have known, they would have been gone, we would have maybe opened up a new school choice seat. Let's say somebody moves in August, we make the decision in May. If they're all filled in May and then somebody moves out in August, we don't look at it till the following May. There's somebody that's, that can't be in the district that we really could open up the spot.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, but off of that, does, I don't know, does this, does this affect the parent that spoke?
Yes.
That's one of this, 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 one of these.
Opening up.
Yeah.
Yeah, that will solve that problem. And this is where this all started, was after, after last meeting. We had it, we had a discussion. And it was a question of what can we do? How can we do it? We got legal advice as to what we couldn't, couldn't do. Then we looked at, okay, what are the options, which then caused Jen and I to talk about, well, should we do this more often? We didn't wanna do it every meeting. We didn't wanna do it once a month, cuz that would become too laborious and it would be crazy. But we both agree that a quarterly review would make sense. It would allow us to be flexible. It solves all the problems that we currently have right now. It's something that we're able to address, and then going forward, bless you early, um, we're gonna deal with this on a quarterly basis going forward. But that solves the issue that came to our attention last meeting.
The grade five example is excellent. We, we didn't open any seats last year when Jen came to me for grade five because it was gonna be a big group. And now all of a sudden, we've had a bunch of students leaving the year and at the end of last year. So we went from worried about our class size in grade five to like, wow. We're, so really kind of low, you know?
And this panel will actually help us in a number of instances on the school choice side, and now we'll have kids from other, out of district coming here. All right, so can I get a show of hands to accept the motion? Aaron, let the record show the motion passes seven zero zero. All right, you're up again. Horses.
Uh, just one super, super exciting one. Um, it, it that we finally got to announce our uh Grinch Food Excellence in Teaching Award winners. This year we had Anna Hitchcock, who's a mathematics teacher at South Creek Regional School. This year we had Anna Hitchcock, who's a mathematics teacher at Southwick Regional School. Um, and what I just loved about, um, they, everybody sends in, um, their recommendations of why certain people should win. And we, everybody loves teachers, but the thing you need to know about Anna is, um, she's bilingual, am I correct, Joe?
She's uh speaks Polish.
She speaks Polish. She works with, um, we've got a lot of, uh, Ukrainian refugee, uh, children that have come in that. Don't have any, um, English at all. She volunteers her time, um, during her prep time, outside of class time. Um, to work with, um, our students who, um, are not native English speakers and that, um, are just learning our language. Um, so, uh, in a day and age of where, um, teachers are overworked and they're exhausted. And they're asked to do more and more and more, um, we have a teacher who really puts it out there and helps our kids. And is really making a difference in the lives of our E L L learners. Uh, we also have Carrie Wheeler, another fabulous grade one teacher at Woodland School. Um, she, uh, worked, uh, on a, we're not kind of on the experiment, but, um, she's working, um, with. Fran Fady Kevich, who was also a Grinspoon winner a few years ago, and they're doing, um, where Carrie teaches, uh, reading. To two, um, groups and Fran teaches the math, um, to the two groups. Um, and so it's really stepping outside of your comfort zone because as an elementary teacher, like you're used to having your kids like all day long. Um, and she's fabulous, she cares about her kids, um, it was exciting and, um. I couldn't be prouder to have both of them, um, working in our school district, so. It's exciting and it will be.
Are these Grinspoon? So these are the teacher of the year.
Yes, and, um, you'll get invitations to the Grinspoon dinner at May.
Eleven.
Eleven. Yes.
I kinda wanted during COVID, so then we just put a celebration in our house. Yeah, we zoomed.
So, only come. Since I've got the new interim principal and the old principal here. Is maybe a recommendation or suggestion. I know I joked with Joe some years ago about having a teacher of the year parking spot. Up at high school, that somehow as there is a teacher of the week parking spot, that seems to be empty every day.
Empty because it was a COVID, the teacher of the week was a COVID initiative that we were doing.
When they were in school.
No, I can't, I can't remember.
Yeah, you should totally convert that.
No, I think, I think it should be teacher of the year. I'm sure we can find eight dollars in the budget for a new sign. We should have the seniors painted. Get a renewed sign and get a spot for teacher of the year. It's great, cuz I mean, it's, it, but there should be, a li, you know, they win that award, they get a free mode parking spot per year. They put in their car, uh, the teacher of the year, lecture. But just a recommendation, but it's a spot that I park in when the basketball comes around. Beth, when Beth hands some of that, yeah. Well, it was also Beth McCarthy.
But still going.
Um, all right, so. For the sake of time here, negotiations, we don't have any negotiations. Um, finance, just had it, LP back.
Next Thursday.
Yeah, next Thursday. Yeah, um, LP back, anything for you?
Yeah, well, nothing crazy, but we, the search for new director is underway and so instead of we. A representative from NASDAQ to the search and the screening. Um, this company, it was M A S C or NASDAQ, we ended up calling it NASDAQ just because.
Not the song.
It's spelled the same though. And, um, so the processes in full, the screening committees are being made and all, um. Resumes are to be back to NASDAQ by. I forget. May first.
Okay.
And someone's going to be pointed to the position by.
That makes sense.
Yes.
Obviously, we have a meeting coming up with Liz, right?
Yeah, next, I believe it's September twenty-first. Not laughing, it's getting late.
It's March.
Number right, okay, March twenty-first. No, we changed to three, so we changed to three, March twenty-first at three and then we have school committee that night.
Okay, uh, buildings and grounds, we haven't had another meeting, um, but we did. Oh, we did send out and told the guy to go start his process, right, for the, the grounds?
I have kind, I have reached out to him three times and have not heard back from him. And Eric Whitehander has done the same, uh, uh. Two other issues, he has not heard back from him as well. I've had trouble, I've had multiple forms of reaching out.
That's weird.
Yes.
That's not normal.
I know, so I don't know what we do next.
Sounds like, I, I mean, unless there's some weird emergency situation going on that we don't know about, it would sound like we don't wanna go with this person.
Why would the, is the company, like, we're calling the company, right? Cuz he.
He is.
He is the company, yeah.
It's not a company, it's him.
Okay, well that.
I, I mean, um, I follow, I followed up on three different occasions in the last, since you gave me okay to do it last time. So it's a month, maybe? Not even?
Do me a favor, send me his contact info, I, I'm driving for inner Worcester like forever, I can put a call out and see if I can get a hold of him.
Yeah.
All right, let's do that and then we'll, we'll report next time. Damn, I hope we get a hold of him. Um, okay, I O T.
Meeting today. Um, we talked about our summer P M program, which is starting June twenty-sixth this year and running that week. They've had, what did they, forty-three extra kids sign up for this, they can take a hundred and twenty. We had a hundred and sixty-three sign up. Uh, so which is really exciting that it's getting a lot of momentum. They have ner, all, they have one nurse and one nine teachers that signed up to do it too. So we don't need to go out of district for any staff and they're gonna. Talk to, um, high school about getting students again to help out there, especially N H S and their. Community service, um, they talked about what, four different. Modules that they're doing every day, which sounded very interesting. They get to like build their own storefront and that's about math and marketing in LA, so. Subject to it, there was a. Building like an animal robot or something like adapting to, that sounded wicked cool.
There's the skate park.
Um, they have twenty-one kindergartners signed up, which is from five from last year, so the. Difficulty of having little kids is gonna be a concern, but it's very exciting that they're flying to join.
That Brady runs it.
Use somebody.
Oh, okay.
And it's a, it's a program that, you know, we purchase.
It's at Powder Mill, eight, eight forty-five to three fifteen or something.
We got a hundred and sixty kids in here?
A hundred and sixty-three.
Signed up.
Signed up for it.
That'll help us.
So we have a long wait.
First comes return. Oh, okay.
Cuz the one, that hasn't been a problem in years past, so.
So even if you're first hand sign up, you may not be accepted.
We felt like it'd be a more equitable way to choose.
Was there a deadline to apply?
Yes.
Okay. And everybody was told this upfront, or this was after the fact? Okay, well, as long as they're all informative in the head time, that's good.
Yeah, I've had friends that did it last year and she loved it.
So, yeah, it's been growing in popularity because it's been so successful. I wanna say this is year three.
We actually get into the East Grant, um, that's how we've been paying for it. We've been making it free to the community members through the use of the user grant. But, um, obviously that will stop, so at some point there may be a cost to the community, but we may, we'll talk about that when the time comes about how we wanna. Proceed for next year, but, um, I would recommend we keep going with it, even if some, there is some costs to the communities.
Right.
And then we talked about, um, the Hill for Literacy Initiative and then some really amazing data presentations. Um, from, uh.
Emma and, um, Markowitz.
Yep.
I had her as a re-intervention, she was amazing. Laura, yeah, she's my, she's my literacy coach now, she's killing it.
So it was really awesome data from Dibbles, grades K through four, I believe. Um, just showing.
Those are the grades that encompasses.
Yeah, awesome, awesome growth, so, so really showing that our, our literacy initiative, even though it's in the early stages. Is really making a difference.
And Beth said something about how we have other people from other districts coming to see what we're doing as a district. Like, we're like a role model for many of our other districts, even like in Aggo, I know they're just starting their hill literacy initiative there. Um, but they're like modeling themselves after us, which is. Really compelling, cool.
And I just wanna let you know, I was at, um, superintendent's meeting on Friday and multiple superintendents are coming up. And coming in to see our math program that we started five years ago that they're just getting on board with now.
Yeah, we have South Hadley here today.
South Hadley today, and I know Graham is coming, he stopped me to talk to me about it.
Kevin Overhand is coming, we have.
Church. Thousand dollars.
I, I, I think it really speaks to the work that our teachers are doing.
All right, so wellness. Everybody's well? Bed, no, technology. Anything, Pam?
No, although I would, I do like your suggestion about, um, both of those directors being at town meeting.
Yeah.
Um, I think especially when we have the capital concerns that come up, um.
Yeah.
Um, cabinet committee, we met last Wednesday. Basically, uh, police department needs a new HVAC system. The fire department wants to get new garage door openers. They want to expand and kind of change around their sleeping quarters. And they do need, um. AC units, stuff like that, so there's a lot of money that, uh.
From a capital side this year.
Well, we don't have any money in capital, but there's a lot of requests, including the, uh, vehicles for the school that are on that.
This meeting on the twenty-sixth is gonna be a blast.
Yeah, so. I'll say the fire department and. Forget the numbers exactly, three hundred thousand. The police is right around the same, you know.
They got their phone this year.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, all in with the school, the police, the fire. I mean, it's. There, there was another, I know, like.
A hundred thousand dollar charge.
Oh, yeah, something with the B P W. I have my minutes.
We can pay for our whole wifi upgrade by charging admission to see our math program.
And same with the, um. Master plan, there's actually too much information. If anybody here wants me to forward the events on the. It, it, it honestly, it's, um. Hard to keep up with, it's. A ton of information, I will say that, that committee is awesome. It's really a good group, um, we've had some, like, changing of. Save the guard and all in, in and around different, uh, committee members. I think it's really kind of refreshing, uh. To be in that group and there are a ton of like energetic people that really care. You know, future being prosperous and I could say it's, it's nice.
So this is part of that group, right?
Yeah, uh, they're coming up. Next week, I think on the fifteenth, meet with kind of our students to get there and put on some topics as well. And, um. Yeah, she's away, uh. Uh, I get their first name wrong, last name is Michaels. Uh, she, she's also one of. Nina, Nina, yeah, she, she's studying in.
Oh, no, Maria, Maria's in.
Did it, okay, yeah. Yeah.
All right, now Lucas is funny, he's funny in that group. He gets to vote in that group, right? He does. Um, athletics, we probably have to have a transition meeting.
Yep.
Maybe we'll have one.
Major athletics ended, so spring season's.
Maybe we can have ones in the next week or two, we can, the new interim principal. For our little group.
So F I N, an email never went out about, um, uh, registration being open for athletics. This first spring athletics.
I'm sure I got that.
Yeah, yeah, cuz my daughter asked, you got lacrosse?
Yeah, for family.
Maybe it went, maybe it only went to those that were registered in family ID.
I can get, I can get the link and send it off this week, uh, can we take that, well. What do we got, another week or two? Weeks maybe?
And March, oh, yeah, it might be. So it's like a, some kind of week one.
Yeah.
So I think March twenty-first.
All right, uh, live, we don't have any legislative, there's nobody here for public comment. Um, does anybody got anything for old business or new business? I'm gonna combine them in both. All right, I am gonna entertain a motion to adjourn, if that's okay? Can I get a pair of hands to, uh, meeting, Aaron, let the record show, the motion passes seven zero zero, thank you everybody for reading.